What happened for the skids dealer with Rush Hawk? Just go in there and we don't, we haven't, we haven't done it yet, but we, we've talked about it this morning again. So it's from one of our spots and we touched base on it.
There's a sign broke off, I think out there on the, on Geffro. Where it's crossed by Steve Geffro on the north side, somebody must have knocked him.
That's annoying.
It's a non-Indian deal, right?
Bro, it's not about this.
Yeah, it's about that high sticking up. It's getting there.
Try to.
Just figure where.
Try to get it out and pull that anchor out.
Yep, yep, yep. Or shovel post over the existing whatever, pull it.
Yeah.
Great.
Other than that, nope, I don't have anything. And then you guys just had a little bit after lunch, right?
Yeah.
Uh.
We might even just go through lunch.
No, I think we're just gonna go through lunch because all we have, that's the last agenda item, so.
Yeah, well.
Some forget some.
Just approve some permits.
Yep. Just got some permits.
Just, uh, I'll call you. Call me when you're.
Yeah.
You can state it right away from here and we'll, we'll write off. Okay. Hey, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, bro.
We will see you next year.
Give two week notice a time.
Yeah.
Wayne Ely.
Ely. What's going on? I did your back on Teresa Ellerby.
Okay.
Um, so what she advised on going with the three year wouldn't change anything for the extended service contract. Um, it would lock everything in for the three years at those rates. It does have an effect on the assessor website. Um, we won't get as big of a discounts going three years as opposed to five years. So on the website contracts, where it has the payment schedule A, showing once a 20% discount for signing multi, multi-year service contract. Uh, that discount would be 10% as opposed to 20%. So those rates were 2243322. Again, that's pro-rated because it's not gonna come due until June. And then for the years after that, instead of being 2200, it would be 2,475. So three years, 25 and 26.
Well, I think for that minimal difference, we should probably go with the lower one just so it gives us an opportunity. If we're willing to get out of the time trap first.
Right.
Yeah.
The years.
I would say for that, we're already, I mean, we're still doing some positive savings with the three year, but it still gives us the ability to back out.
Yeah.
If a new product would arrive or something like that, so. I think, I think we priced to go for the three year.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
I think if none of that changes and it's just a little values, I guess I'd say our motion bar still stands and if you're fine with it, then.
Okay, I will let her and her older draw three year contracts and have those sent over.
Okay, yeah, and then just let me know or Marcy know when that's done and I can, I can come in and.
I would, uh, I would guess by the end of the week, she'll probably have it done.
Okay, yeah. That should be fine. All right. Thanks, Wendy. Yeah, well, this, um, this is just the, um, maintenance certificate for the federal aid roads and projects. Um, we signed it every year. Doesn't look to me like anything's ever changed. There's a couple of things highlighted, but it's, um, it's mainly after projects, like a post-construction thing that it doesn't really, um, isn't really ever anything changed or nothing like that, so. This says like after a project, it's our responsibility to maintain the signings and margins of the project and, um.
Speed limits.
Prohibit, uh, prohibit access and encroachment upon the right of way, which we've been doing with the fences and bales and stuff like that for the federal aid roads, so. Provide maintenance to the protected objects at the time of expensive costs, so. Then you have restricted speed limits for private, old max design speed, which I'm gonna sign a little after project, so. So basically, it's pretty much the same. I don't see any differences, so. Does it entertain a motion to approve table or deny the, uh, maintenance certification with the, uh, this is through local government in here, Paul Benny, which I'm assuming is the DOT, North Dakota DOT, they're usually handling that, so. Is a motion to approve table or deny maintenance certificate for federal aid roads and projects?
Is this a yearly thing?
I believe so.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
I was there.
Seconded by Commissioner Holland, so having a discussion on maintenance certificates for federal aid projects and things, but I'm not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Not opposed. Certificate approved, I sign, Mr. Marcy here. With that, I believe the agenda items are all complete.
The view.
Right, right, and so I think that's already been put on the society.
So we're gonna build in yourself here.
I believe Marcy highlights those in yellow, those are the ones that need to be reappointed.
It's changed, eh?
James May would be on the weed board, I believe, right?
Yeah, he was on.
Since 21, huh?
So it looks like for the weed board, it'd be Cole Schneider and.
Bob Bradner. And, yeah. We know with Bob what's going on, so I'm not even gonna speak about it, yeah.
Right, well, I'd say with that one, you're gonna, you're gonna look for appointee for that, um. Well, for some of you new guys that haven't been a part of this before, generally what we do is whoever's in your district, that's kind of your job to fill that position, I guess, so.
Solution, Bob's.
Bob's is, uh.
District five.
Well, that's a question for the weed, with the weed board, because like what we talked about, he lives in precinct four or five now.
He's in five.
But, but we also don't have someone for district two because Leonard Better got districted out because that was, that would have been my district. Yes. So I believe technically at this point, looking at the weed board, I think, uh, James lives in the city with, and then Larson is in precinct five, so there would have been two in that precinct five with Bradner and.
You're making, what's his name?
Well, like I said, if you have a candidate, I, I don't have a problem with it because the people I asked in my district that I thought of tend to be down, so I don't, I don't think candidate work, so. But no, if you have a candidate, if you want to, you can talk to him some more if he, if he's interested, I.
It seems sound like you did.
I don't think anybody else, I mean, everybody's welcome. Got other candidates for these boards, it would just be like anything else, we would nominate several of them and vote on it till we get somebody.
So if he wouldn't take it, then which, which district, district two doesn't have one?
Yeah, my district technically doesn't have one because Leonard Better was always in my district, but now he got reprecinct, or redistricted, so. But district five technically have two representatives too, because I believe Bradner got, went from four to five after the redistricting, so.
Elmer Brad would be, I guess, interested in him.
Well, like I said, I, I have no problem with ignoring the district scenario here, just to the fact that it's not very easy to find people. So if you find someone interested in the division, I would say just bring it forward to the next meeting and we'll, you know, we'll nominate. If we have more than one nominee, then vote on it. So you, I guess everybody would be welcome if you find somebody, that's fine, there's no. I just always said the kind of unwritten rule was that we tried to get someone from each precinct, so you'd go, oh, the guy in your area is a, go find someone for weed board. That's just kind of the way they always did it, but doesn't mean you have to do it that way. I don't think there's any law that says we have to do it that way, so.
Is Glenn Gaffrey stepping back up again or no?
He's on, he's on the water.
He's on the water, I believe he's the chairman.
But isn't expiring too.
So Commissioner Miller, are you gonna talk to Cole?
Right.
Yeah, and then typically, I mean, like you said, if you don't, if you're not interested in replacing them or something like that, you could just ask that person if they want to again, since they're in your district, so. I can contact Joanne Hooman for the county committee, Ann Lyle, County Public Health.
And Mel Johnson.
I could contact Denise Keller.
And Mel Johnson.
Oh.
Yep.
Joanne Hooman's in that, Hooman's in that before now, too.
Okay, well, Materius is calling then.
Who?
Joanne Hooman.
I could call, I could call her. Joanne, is that what's her name?
Well, actually, that is it, because Joanne would have been in one, because they're on the north side of the, I was, they weren't in my precinct anyway, yeah, I was out there right on the. So yeah, that, that whole district changed up there too, right, because that whole Asian area.
You're contacting her?
I mean, I can.
Go ahead.
Good, that's fine, I know we're good enough, I can call her. And the other ones up front, those are the county officers that we appoint basically every year, so. Even though they're hired for the job, they're technically appointed, so. You gotta reappoint them every year, so. Good. Anybody got any questions on appointments? Not, that's something that will be on the agenda for next month. We have that.
Who's contacting Keller?
I'll contact Keller, is it? I'll probably run into him pretty soon anyway, so. Uh, well, first item, I guess, up on the miscellaneous was the six county commission meeting, which is here on December 12th, which is Tuesday.
I don't have many agenda items, I'm hoping you guys can give me some today.
Well, who do we got for, who's the entertainment, who's the keynote?
I have Brian Poops coming from Littleville, Alcat.
Oh, okay.
Talk about what you're not true to you with, or to Alcat and what's going on. And the ACO wants to come and talk. And then, um, Lowen County wants, I, I got an agenda in front of you guys, but Lowen County wants to come and talk about Apple's service district. Can you guys come up with a couple more things? We're gonna have.
Association of Counties wants to talk about the 911 program and how the county, you know, the state not involved in it.
They all started getting invited, you know?
Yeah, oh, that's good, um. Well, we'll come up with some agenda items, I guess, so. And then your homework assignment. So we have a, we have a special board, so we have a meeting Monday and Tuesday.
So you guys all think they're coming on Tuesday, the 12th?
Well, you guys are gonna have a meeting on Monday, Marcy, night.
So I wanna know how many commissioners are coming because, um.
How long till?
I'm having in the auditorium, so I'm.
Sixteen years.
What is the last till noon?
Ten to noon, yeah, 11:30.
Do you have lunch?
I should, I should.
Eleven thirty to noon?
Yeah. I should.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock to noon, and then we usually eat after that, so.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be at the community hall?
No, we're having it.
Oh, you're having it here, okay.
Ten to noon.
My assistant cook is not gonna be around till the girls gonna be gone.
Weather's too nice, yeah.
What's for dinner? What's for dinner?
Weather's too nice, Tom's still working.
Worried about dinner?
Yeah, that's why you're showing up, so I know you wanna know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna order some roast beef.
Worried about dinner.
You ate, said the meat, he don't.
Is that a two, is that? A free meal.
Yeah, ask for dinner.
It's next week.
You're worried about a free meal.
He said, he'll be here, I said, yeah, because he said, who is, he said, what's for dinner?
Well, rule number one of meetings is if you eat, then they'll come, that's all we do.
So all five of you are gonna come?
I'm gonna try it. Yeah, I'll try it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I suppose I'm kind of running a meeting, I should probably show up, huh?
Can you guys?
Yeah, you better be here.
Come up with the items real quick, or? Anything you wanna discuss with the group?
I don't know, we don't have any problems in this county, so it's hard to.
It's thinking of it.
I mean, really, it's kind of like, I don't wanna say Eden, that seems a little extreme, but.
Mr. Miller, you need to get ready.
Kind of perfect right here. Maybe you should bring up the GPS on the county vehicles, maybe somebody else has an idea.
Well, that's an idea, yeah. Well, it's worth trying.
Bring it up.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else has an operation, or maybe they've looked into it.
Maybe they do it, you don't know.
There you go.
Those are good things to bring up.
Well, the, the six county meeting is a very good meeting.
That one over at Steel was interesting.
It's always good, I really can't complain. The only time it's not good is like, yeah, the next one is probably in like Pheasant or something.
Somebody gotta drive up if it's stormy.
That's a long drive, like the year, the year we went to Pheasant, it was like 40 below a couple of years ago, that was kind of a scary drive.
I went there.
Right, well, the time I went was, I think, the December meeting a couple of years ago, and it was like 40 below, and I thought, this was foolish. I mean, you could die on that trip, like that was, I should skip that one, but.
By the way, we're gonna have, I'm gonna have, um, Jeremy share, make Jeremy share. Jeremy could just make some roast beef, and do one of the roast beef sandwiches, and we do like garlic potatoes, and I think I'll make a coleslaw, yeah.
Well, I'm in, then.
Geez, and we're all showing.
Materius coming now.
Yeah, yeah.
He's already hungry.
It's too expensive to kill your hoes, I'm like.
So you were gonna cook us, uh, what, what was she gonna make us?
I don't know, we still haven't gotten this world famous Kugan food this year, though.
What, you want some wedding Kugan?
There you go.
You want some wedding Kugan?
Six county meeting's a good meeting to go to, I recommend.
What are you showing us, the pots and stuff here? You gonna have a screen or no?
No. I can't, I can't think of any other agenda items off the top of my head.
I didn't sell it off. We don't need a screen.
Last year, all we talked about was snow removal stuff, the last couple six, I mean, I know, like the ones, the couple I went to.
And that's another good item to bring up.
But it was screaming nonstop, what are you guys doing? Because everybody was struggling.
What do you wanna put on there, Materius, snow removal, what?
You talking to me when you say Materius?
Yeah.
Yeah, put snow removal on drive, bring that up, do a good discussion.
I'm driving drives.
Yeah. We discussed over at Steel.
Good thing, that's been rehashed at every six county meeting I can ever think of, so we might as well keep it going. Nobody's got a good answer, I mean.
Nobody's got a good answer.
No, it's hard.
So bring up fences on right of way.
There you go.
Fences and right of way? You don't want that on there too?
Donny's not done fighting about it, yeah.
Fences, Don.
Oh, it's a king fight.
You're gonna have to bring it up then.
Yeah, put their names by it, so they gotta talk about it too, that's a good idea.
That would be the thing, yeah, put their name by it, then they're going.
Commissioner Everly is on the agenda item, there you go. Commissioner Materius' agenda item on privacy, privacy removal, there you go.
And if you don't show up, you're just gonna be talked about.
Oh, they're waiting for you.
There you go, yeah, it'll make it real awkward. I can't think of anything else now, but if you think of anything, get, get all, email her, probably. Okay.
You're not gonna record this, are you?
No. And Don wants wedding, I'll see if I can get some to make here.
Yeah, well, you're gonna make us one time, right?
What's that one?
Huh?
What kind of, what is it you were gonna make us?
Well, I'm not gonna do the filth up, I don't have time for that, I can probably get some wedding stuff.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, we'll have to sort that out.
We'll talk about Kugan later.
That's right, Kugan will have to get tabled. Item three is gonna be a plat, uh, track 10 and track 11 located in the southwest quarter, of the southeast quarter, section six. Township 132, range 76 of the fifth, fifth country, Ridian, Emmens County.
Yeah, it's good, there, there was, uh.
Where's this at?
Just north of town, uh, Coons and Schumacher, or, or.
Oh, right on the north side, yeah, okay.
Their boundary line between the two, um, actually goes right through one, I think it's a garage she has, so they're moving it to the east a little bit. They're just moving it.
A boundary line, because.
They are forcing them to move the building.
No, they're just gonna move the line.
Common sense.
Everything, it goes on the original line and the new line.
It's not even a very big change at all, it's like.
Key to me, yeah.
Not even, okay. Everything looked good, though, I mean, checks out, what are you doing? Okay, go. Um, I have a motion to approve table or deny the plat here for, looks like Jeremy Coon's for them. And I have a motion to approve table or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve, they're in harmony with me.
Commissioner Materius, motion to approve plat.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion? I will recuse myself due to a conflict of interest, as it's my wife's relative, so. Not that it really matters too much, but. So is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Plat approved. Area seven, you sign that one. Next will be a liquor license for Art Place by the Bay, a liquor license for. Well, who's ever.
That's for the whole course of the year, right?
Uh, this is the actual liquor license, so yeah, so this is the liquor license for cacti, liquor license for Art Place, Bay, South Central Threshers, and the Country Club, so this is their yearly liquor license, so I think you can just appeal all more of them unless it's.
Do they gotta make a background check on them every time they do a liquor license?
Sure, but I know this is, this is one thing I always requested that the sheriff take a look at, but I'm assuming there's probably not an issue or he'd probably be here, so.
I don't think it would be, I was just kind of curious, did they do?
And I couldn't tell you as far as that's part of the process or not, but.
I will set them at the agenda, so you don't have to.
Okay. Well, I mean, not that I know of any issues here, it's probably not a problem, so. I guess it would entertain a motion to approve table, deny in here all these.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve all four liquor licenses renewals, seconded by Commissioner Materius, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Liquor license approved. Next is a raffle permit for the Country Club.
Plays a one-time deal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just sell.
Fun grazers or something.
I'll make a motion.
That's where that building, they want to put up.
No, they got a raffle permit, they get on cash rewards or whatever, so.
They want to put that eighty by on this.
But then, yeah, that's not for, that's not for that, so.
Raffle permit?
Yep.
It's like a yearly thing they do every year?
Yeah, they do, do that, raffle permit every year.
All right, got a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Holm, motion to approve?
Yep.
Seconded by Commissioner Materius, any more discussion on the approval of the raffle permit for the lit in Country Club? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Raffle permit approved. Next is a county deed for Bay, A, Progola, Block 12, Block 24, Hunter's Persedition, Litton, Emmens County. I'm assuming this is like a tax.
Okay, at the tax sale, I sold that, so I mean, Progola property, a mom purchased it.
Pretty cut and dried, I'm assuming, I mean.
Yep.
Joe, Joe probably drafted that.
Yep.
So, so I looked at that, okay.
Dale Everly, please.
Approve table or deny the, the deed for.
See the guy north of the.
Bay Progola.
Dale Everly.
Have a motion to approve table or deny?
Cross from the museum to the west. By the museum, it's straight to the west, right in the corner.
Yeah, this is drafted by Joe, this was, the tax was delinquent, came back to the county, and then it was purchased, you know, so this is basically the sale of the tax delinquent property, so. Looks like Joe drafted the deed.
Good, make a motion for it.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the county deed.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Materius, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Be approved.
The next deed is for that lot that was done by Hay, um, Dale Everly purchased that.
Yeah. Did, um, did Tigger come in for that too?
No. Dale was the only one that bid on it.
It was a vacant lot, right?
Yeah.
Well, it was just a little triangle thing there.
Right, something, okay. Again, this.
Hefty's Dale. Hefty's Dale.
This deed was.
Right by the mother's house, okay.
It's county deed for Dale Everly on a triangular lot between highway, between the highway and railroad, more particular described as the pub lot three in the northeast quarter and the northwest quarter. Section six, township 129, range 74, Hay City, Emmens County. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Materius, is there any more discussion on the county deed for Dale Everly? Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
What up to the house left here?
He paid those taxes, he paid the three years before the sale.
Is Mary ever still with us? Does he have this wife still with him?
Okay, tax abatement for parcel 51 dash two, dad 154, tax year 2023.
He applied for the veterans credit. That's what she was about.
There's all tax abatement for, also a tax abatement for parcel 52 dash 0014, dash 00825 dash 000 for tax year 2023, and a tax abatement.
They're both homestead credits.
For parcel 50 and dash six, all 519 dash 000, tax year 2023. Tax credits and. Yeah. Homestead, two homestead credits and Litton's credit, which is really not much to approve table or deny, and so. This will entertain a motion to approve all three, approve, table or deny. If any one individual has been wanting to move, it's a remote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve all three tax payments, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion on the tax payments? Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abatement's approved. One guy always says he was, he was always gonna come get his abatement since he was all the way down to the valley. It's a good time. Well, all right, I don't go get it from him.
Yeah.
He's wood, you're, he can grab him and move him.
He hated those.
Yeah, yeah, he hated him, always said he was gonna do it.
He said, I'm gonna do it just to play.
Yeah, really did. So I'm done, time's up. Yep. Now you gotta mount the corner hall, all right? Everybody's got a pile of porn this year, huh? It's about done, it's probably a couple of weeks, probably this year. Very good. Five hundred thousand feet left. Very well done, we're coming on, so. Trade spots that you guys have noticed, are they moved to the end?
Hey, dude, what's this, uh, A train shot on that little team thing I did? Division survey, so. Well, this was very, yeah. So whether you're in the area to see, but. And it's actually involved. Engaging all, engineering officers are needed. Okay, just having, you guys.
Scott, this on bill for A train, no, it's because of purchase, seven thousand. Flat, okay? Thanks. It's flat then. It's flat then.
Oh. Oh, from that, uh, Turner Center.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, I thought you knew that. I thought you knew A train.
No, I couldn't think of who.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've already known that, then I would, oh, yeah. Yeah, I couldn't even think of who that was.
Yeah, that's Aaron Turner.
Okay.
I thought you were one of them.
Yeah, that's a drug right on, or, or whatever, so, okay, thank you. Well, it's off from, well, the building is.
I might say the check to John.
There's so much that I was gonna present.
What's DRW custom?
Oh, he paid for it.
Oh, he paid for it?
Yeah, he paid for it.
Oh, then, it's a reverse.
Reverse.
What's DRW custom? Seventy-five hundred bucks.
A trailer, black bed.
Huh?
Okay.
Black bed trailer for everyone's.
A black bed trailer.
So why is John paying for these? How come he doesn't use, don't they got a credit card to charge it to, or what?
Yeah, but I think they're, I think they were over or something, and I think he had to use. I can, I'll, I'll call out here, but I remember something to that.
Here's another one, Dan. I just would like, you know, instead of somebody using their own personal, I think, effect, uh.
You don't wanna be doing that.
Right.
Skyler, another question, there's some people, it's, you know, the, John paid for and reverse. There was a deal with the credit part, but it was, they would have just been to redeem it once, if you remember.
They wanted a lot of trailer, remember? A lot of them? I thought they had one.
Okay.
I don't know, I just.
That's just for him, we're not sending him. Okay, okay, thanks. I wasn't, I wasn't certain, thanks. The fact is not gonna be made, they won't be John, we're just gonna hold it, and he's gonna pick it up.
Oh, so you're not making any?
No.
Okay.
No, there was a problem with the credit card, that's why I was just wondering, I thought maybe he just?
I just don't want employees to get in the habit of?
Cause I know there was a problem at one time with one of the cards. Aaron, you want, it was your turn?
Yeah.
Or is it, I'll get one?
That was from Christmas time, pretty pinched, pretty fun, also.
Summer good, summer good.
Getting plenty, plenty of change. We're playing with stuff, your team can roll to it. I always take them, I'm gonna write it in. It's just amazing the amount of corn out that comes through the month. I mean, like, everyone was doing, every elevator, I haven't been down to Hay, but I heard that was a pretty good amount, and we got a few dollars. Well, even Dog did that, like, right in time there, dog.
Are you done, now, dog? Are you done?
That corn pile by the elevator in Stroud, with Danny had raised the water there a little bit, and I, I mean, that's a lot of pressure, remember?
Mel, which?
I'm ready to dig it, you made? Four days? I don't think it's four million, it was almost three, I think. I think that's the one, like, the amount of water. Pretty well.
Yeah, but I'll be showing you.
I don't know, they're ending that all, I don't know.
They will.
Well, he's probably gonna be young, though.
Was the corn dry? Cause there's so much out there yet.
Yeah, there's, there's still a bit out there.
Yeah, there is, I'd see it on the road, those, and I'm like, I figured it's gotta be dry, now?
You know, it sounds like there was. It was fourteen and a half. But if you get it, if you're on, if you're on the, the river's flowers on the road, the line must have been loading on the road or something. Stranger, there's a little pile on it, but I don't know, it's black, and you're in the air. Something's gonna come up. Right through here, the sunflower pile, like, about six in the morning, so, I was like, thank God it was sunflowers, I blasted right through it. I had about five, five of them. Really? I didn't think it was gonna be that dry, I didn't want to get that, really? That's the one thing, the flower, the those.
Yeah.
Listen, it's always, if you make any, I mean, I'm a common, which, it's a beauty, it's all the way. On your combine. It was a wire, it was, really? There's people wearing their gloves underneath the top, they're like, done, and they're like. It was just you in the light for harvest, then, basically, huh? Was he in the light for harvest, but he went to me, man. I got pulled down, and I'm like, wow, where do you got to take on that?
One goes down, and the other one. That could work pretty good, though.
Well, then, would you just keep the header out, before you do that, and switch out together, a lot of, oh, okay, he's fine. The team's boarding, he's gonna sell it, he's gonna be happy, they're three for everybody. Just jumping to Tuesday, time line, let's give you the time line, so, no, no, I mean, it's. So, I've been thinking, I'm not gonna have to point there anymore.
Who's that one?
Hires for, the horse.
It's still going down.
Little bit, yeah. Hires for, for. I'm saying, it's only four hundred dollars, but it's like, why would it say hires for?
Chicken, chickens. Yeah, it was, yeah, you just, it was a pile of chickens, so. This year, she had, she had chickens, so.
Well, my guess is. Well, I don't know, well, it's sort of a chance, it's been about eight years.
A little different than the other, you said, I mean, that was, you know, hunting, so, I thought, maybe, maybe, three or four, we didn't mature along there, doing them, but I thought, well, it's only three or four, there's. Decent, so, you go, like, hey, you're on, but. I heard, I heard over by McIntosh County, there were a bunch of dead meat, or dead chickens, or something like that, that bird food. She, she had.
True North Steel, where's all this steel for?
That True North Steel is probably culverts.
Is that what it is?
I, True North, that's where we get culverts, we use, so, but I would say that's most likely, unless there's something different in there.
About over forty-five dollars.
Yeah.
About to get expensive.
Maybe it can be this poor one, they don't find it.
Did you, there's a lot of department, where they?
It says, I was wrong.
One year, I saved your floor at the hay grocery store.
It's been wrong.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. We never added any floor in the leak, but we believe it's under the store. Cause we dug down, and it ended up just. So, there was, there's a basket in that grocery store, in the condition part of the way, we dug down, and we got to that, we never did.
Hires for, let's see, what? That was hires for a store.
Cause if we found her, like, he goes, look for the grocery.
I don't know, but why would he say vehicle? Why would he put that? Exactly.
We didn't want to beef anymore, cause it was, it was cold, and there was water.
Just don't make sense, I say, I mean, why? Exactly, I mean, why?
Over to the, his stores.
Explain why they're, they can explain it?
I got a call, cause remember, the vehicle post office, cause it said they've drawn water.
And what the vehicle number is.
Things don't come quick, hopefully. There's no more water coming in the post office, not really fixed that leak for the, for the. It's actually things that the grocery store, I mean, obviously, there's still ground water in town, but they think that that leaks was kind of contributing to the ground water.
Say, you know, those type of.
Same curious. I'm kind of curious if the water under the grocery store, if that floor, of course, if I made it worse, if the water goes down.
No, 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 but, but there, you get that little hole there, the water was right there.
Yeah, right there.
And she took me in the pot, and I said, you got it right there, cause it was darned to the start.
She goes, well, done, yeah, but he says, there's a leak there, and I'm like, well, what comes down everywhere?
That would be a, that's what it's.
But you can't do, put it that, that ground water, you get down six feet, and you hear, you.
Really?
Well, it's terrible. So, I mean, yours, I was just. Thinking that that might even, that could have been leaking for.
Years.
Okay.
Todd told me, he used to thought that. There used to be like a furnace room underneath that grocery store? And many years ago. A lot of stuff, they just abandoned it, and they moved it to a different furnace upstairs, and they just, but they watch all the, so. The water lines and everything, and so, it all comes down.
That's what I'm gonna say. Oh, so that was, that is true.
Yeah.
It's so, yeah, they just, supposedly, they just filled it, and the water always, it was underneath, and it's been down.
Yeah, that must have started the weekend here, and nobody knew about it. I mean, like I said, that is, that's still in the ground over there, dropping, I mean, like, yeah, where's the worries, they have?
I mean, they have other meter, however.
Well, that's what I told, I told Chris Bungard that one day, I said, you guys' meter, you gotta have, like, what you're buying versus what you're selling, and he goes, well, it's hard to tell, because, like, they get those, and those strings, and stuff, and I'm like, yeah, but you. Your meter, you didn't get it now, or, so, obviously, they have some meter holders somewhere, they can't track, but, you know, every town's like that. Or like, fire hall, like, even in Hazelton, they just started metering that a couple of years ago. Well, their theory was, they didn't charge for water, it's like, yeah, and that's the meter, and so, you know what you're selling.
I mean, tires for that.
So, you didn't have a, where you would have a total size for selling.
Totally vehicle.
It's like, yeah. They should. They should put on. I mean, just let them people know, when they, soon, they'll be right on, which vehicle, so. We don't need that, it's very, it's quite, I wonder what. And make it, and drive it.
Which gotta be an answer, meter, you would think so, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be your job, so, maybe it should be their job, if they're gonna use, if they buy some, they need to rent on it, so.
I'll make sure they do that.
That just goes on.
It's a lot simpler, you, I mean, you would think.
You know, when you build, you can finally get parts and go through them.
He was like, first, he was like, one topic, I don't know, I don't know, sorry, but, maybe it was only maybe, or, you know, it's hard. If you're handling. I haven't done it, I haven't seen a lot, you know what I mean, like, it just depends on the volume, I guess, and in the summer, they take their, their ice cream, and it's there, the. It's a big water number, so.
I still don't know that one, though.
Well, they, they, they usually, it's about the percentage, usually, what they're done is if you're under ten percent, you're usually, it's a good, cause the meters can be off a little bit, so, if you get above ten percent, then you need to start looking at the, because it was probably a leak somewhere.
So, I take it all this is from the credit card?
Yep.
I wonder what the limit is on the credit card?
Um.
I sent my guys down, he said it was a bad part, it was about five, five and a half feet deep, and when you get the water. See, like, at the post office, it says it was in this pure gravel, and then you get down about six feet or so, and then you get to the, so, even like, to put a pump down there, twice you pump it, it's, it's terrible, just digging the peg is awful. It's, it's, there's some tough ground down there. So, why are you guys actually talking down there, you hit that tough ground there? Cause, yeah, digging, it's like digging down our Zing, too, if you're not hitting rocks, you're hitting more, I mean, like, clay, but it's terrible. It was all, you know, when you hit things, like, is it that?
They have they order?
Farmer down there, they're also, they get. Um.
Out there.
We had big goals, and that thing, like, we can bring months or years, you've got that ground wolf in the water.
Six thousand dollars.
It's the same deal, it was like a layer of gravel, so the water would fill out of this, and you'd get more like that, well, at least there's a shovel out, and the water, and it was down in that much. You'd have to have two shovels down in the hole, one to take a scoop, go in the scrape, the other shovel with.
You wanna know where the packing?
It's horrible.
The tavern is, that's yours, tavern is, that's yours, tavern is, that's yours.
Go down there, dig in that.
That's a curse.
Four of them there down there. Now, and if the county's there, then now, I want you to.
Yeah, I think where, where they, where they, be nice and.
If they're genie eating, there are a lot of goods, so they can get that.
Six thousand dollars. Oh, but you're, I mean. North Dakota Association of County, seventy-one hundred.
Shins of. They're sick, and you go there, and you get. Seen Bungard, he's sure, he's a lot smaller than. Yeah, it didn't have to be like, so, it lost every eleven. Kind of, I beat it already. Well, and like the driveways, like, everybody was digging, getting, getting holes in it's gravel, that was all the, once I got to the grass, it was.
Putting with the.
Two door into it.
Yeah.
He had a shop during.
What, they threw on the other one?
Or, or, so, and we'll kind of put it underground and.
How many dollars? Six thousand.
We just basically put.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight. It's a heavy duty, modular drawer.
It would freeze every, every winter, and.
Eleven drawers. Nine drawers, eleven drawers.
I haven't been out there.
I've never been in that office. Well, I wonder if they didn't separate the office?
Oh, they were separating the offices, I know that.
Yeah, and put, in John's office, but I can gather. They're splitting the offices, huh? Yeah, I don't know, I haven't been out there, I'm just wondering if that's what they did. He wanted to be about it, Aaron? Does he know anything about it, where they split the offices out of the county shop?
Well, I know they were talking about it, I don't know if it ever, anything happened on it.
Oh, I was just wondering, cause they ordered six thousand dollars with the cabinet, they probably funded.
You know, what comes to me?
Uh, fifty-eight hundred? Yeah, I thought the same thing, it's like, wow. They've been out a long time to recharge it. Yeah. Really, from the cabinets, come on.
I was looking up this tracking system thing. On my jazz software, I can do it, however, it only connects to like the phones or if they have a tablet, and they have to be logged in, so, I really, I mean, if they didn't.
They have to be logged in.
They can log out of, yeah, the field map, I would have to put on, so, I mean, that's not exactly, maybe, for, but.
So, they'd have, they'd have to answer why they logged out.
Yeah, I mean, but then.
They stopped really late.
And then everybody that had a tablet, or was, do a software on their phone, and then you log in. Um, and then, and then I log in, and see, and you have. And then you go in there all the time, and that.
Got your deal.
Yeah, I think something, there are companies, like Nationwide Companies, you know, you have to share, it's good in your car, and, like, oh, yeah, I mean. You can pursue that, or. Yeah, the best thing is just ask, okay, cause I do, someone down, see.
Better than Chip and Don deals.
Right.
But you know what else, hundred and twenty inch high steel rolling ladder, nine step, what is that? Steel rolling ladder, nine steps, is that one of them? Okay. What? It's a hundred and twenty inch high steel rolling ladder, nine steps, is that something that's?
Well, it would be like a steel ladder, like, when you gotta go like, like a.
A rolling ladder?
Right, like, what you get, like, for, like, washing your windows on a truck or something, like, the graded steps, and the handrail, and the wheels, and the.
Oh, I wonder.
Yeah, like, they had them on the mine and stuff, for washing, like, the windows.
Either there, they had them up there. Forty-four grand?
Yeah, but if it's a rolling one, I'm just wondering if it's like one for, like, washing the, like, the windows on the grader, or working on the grader, like, one of them.
Who signed that one?
How many, one for four grand? Twenty, well, it was twenty, almost twenty-eight hundred, but the thing is, the freight cost is twelve hundred. Oh, hundred for a freight cost.
Department over that, or who over that?
I don't know, who did this, uh, not to ship to Emmens County Local Government.
I would have to assume a rolling ladder, that'd be something, they like.
Gotta be here.
I'll check it out.
But the freight cost, the thing is, the freight cost is twelve hundred. I mean, you could almost drove up, get it, wherever it came from. Four grand. Oh, it came from Illinois, well, you almost, but it dropped before there, it's twelve hundred dollars.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's one of them rolling ladders, and they used to have a lot of DFC. So, you can wash and cook, and those are gonna make it broke, or whatever, it's, when you step on it, then it starts like a D O S, or like those, like, wheels, something.
You know, it wasn't.
It kind of shipped to Emmens County Local Government. Sixth Avenue, South.
Oh, character of department, that is. So, you wanna know what they ordered there, and you can call out there again?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's one of them.
What happened to the old one? And they should have, ask them, I don't know, to me, they should have checked what the freight cost was gonna be, twelve hundred dollars?
Skyler, the deal with that ladder, with that ladder, if I would do one. Okay, I'll tell them, thanks. Are you almost through, or do you want Skyler to come in?
No, I don't. No. We're questioning why they should write on there with their form.
Um, they were just kind of wanting, cause the freight cost was high, you know, they were questioning that.
Association of County Deeds, there's, there's your free process of a nine-one-one program.
Okay, I'll let them know, thanks.
Dollars a year, every ten thousand, I don't know, it's still there.
Every shop's gonna have one, do you change light bulbs, and, you know, stuff like that.
Well, they do, there's just limits on that, on rates, and stuff like that, it's all. I think that states, that I can.
Wow, that's what I, yeah. Been, four thousand dollars. I should have one of my, I'm telling you, I changed my phone, really? Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's like they got a open check over there, isn't it?
Yeah. You know, I'm sure you can get a change of either the state and federal level, why do you limit them, you know, I'm sure it's a try and hope. You know, I'm sure it's trying to hold, I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to be usable, but.
It's going to be a certain amount of thirty, then you make a very.
But you're going to want to. I'm sure, if your shop's going to change.
Did Travis, did he move down to Hazelton or something, Travis Schaefer? It says it's got a Wilton address, that's why I was wondering.
Well, if it hasn't changed, he has something. Is that the one that, if that's the one that moved to Hazelton, then you take.
Oh, there is one, okay, that's why, yeah, so evidently.
He was with that guy that had all those gun, all the.
Jar off, I said.
I mean, both, I don't need to know.
I don't know, there's two of them there, I don't have a clue.
He should turn them in.
Well, you should do.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't know if it's working for us. Years ago, definitely commissioners hired the employees out there.
But I mean, at least.
At least they introduced us to them.
Well, that's what I mean, if you're putting in something.
Well, he should have brought, yeah, we should have brought them in here, so we can see, you know, just to meet them, see who they are.
Yeah.
Want me to see where the shop, you can bring them in real quick?
I was hoping I was looking for.
Yeah, I'm sure they're.
People work, and it's nice, you're on the.
Yeah, I don't want to bring them in now.
I don't know, I think it's that Travis, that fellow that's in Hazelton, man, nobody knows his face, but they all see the blade there, and they sure like it, I mean, everybody's been real happy with it.
He must have got gravel or something on there, it's a lot better now.
Well, he, he ripped that thing.
What did he?
When they, when they were graveling though, he went, he, because my dad called one day, but what was he doing out here, my dad was putting gravel, and I drove out, and he, I mean, he had a windmill, two feet tall, like, and, but when he was done with it, I mean, it was. But he, he wasn't afraid to go, because he went pretty deep, but I'm not going to say nothing, I'm going to see how it turns out, I mean, it's.
It's, yeah.
Everybody that called out there is like, man, that road is just rock hard, everything's great, so.
Yeah, it's, it's now.
He's pretty happy with it, because, yeah, we got a little gravel on that door, not my shank, it was horrible.
That was terrible.
And he dug into that though, because like I said, I, I came up on it with my pickup, and I'm like, holy jeez, that was a big windmill, and I'm like, he ain't going to get that level out, and he died in it, I mean. So it's. Because that, somebody even called me there one day, and they said, well, you blade guy's not afraid of tearing the road, and I'm like, oh, and they're like, oh, it turned out nice, and I said, okay, good. Right away, when they said that, I'm like, oh, boy, you're telling me, I'm like. But no, everybody seems to be pretty happy. I shouldn't say everybody, in general.
Yeah, it's good compared to, I was on it two, three weeks ago, and you couldn't hardly get through it now.
It was a rugged piece of road for a while, but then you did gravel bad.
Yeah, now you can at least drive it.
That's another road too, though, like during harvest and stuff like that, I mean, that gets action.
Or does Lauren Vaughn, or, uh.
Who?
Strasburg, is he at the Strasburg?
I believe so.
Vaughn.
Lauren who?
Lauren Vaughn.
I don't know the guy.
That's one of the new guys, I think, I think he's working out of Strasburg.
He one of the guys who used to live out there with Terry shares place?
That I couldn't.
With a short guy.
I don't really know him, I just met him one day.
A Vaughn.
He was at the Strasburg shop.
I don't know.
A road guy?
Yeah.
Well, I don't worry, new guys.
I don't know any of them. This guy with kind of a, carries a beard like you do, kind of a cowboy looking guy, I don't know, he was playing on that well grown one day. Is he a buddy of, uh? Carter?
All of that, I think, is Wayne Nelson you're talking about.
I don't know the guy.
The one that, yeah, he, he's, he'll do too, I talked to him on the phone, I haven't.
So how long has Perry Ibov working on?
He just had knee surgery.
Yeah, he's.
Or replaced.
Is he down pretty good?
He might be down, I think he was hauling gravel.
I don't know any of them, that one guy was in the county shop at Stroud, a short guy, he lived off, Terry shares place, or one man, with his folks, or I don't know what, or grandma, grandpa. When that place burned, up there, when that place burned, place. Where the fire departments were called out there. Terry shares whole place, the house.
I don't know.
I think so.
Wayne Nelson.
South of Terry's?
West of.
On Terry's yard.
Oh, yeah.
House little Scotty share doing that.
Well, I wonder how he doing?
I don't.
And so it's an old one there.
Hmm?
They live, do they?
Oh, he's sister, I forget. Boy, it's, yeah.
Where the, he names, they were kept alive, I don't believe he's in.
Well, we hired Justin, you should know, I hired him in January.
Who?
Justin Long, he ran a pizza shop.
Yeah, he's a pizza boy.
See, I've never met him here.
Him I knew, but there's two or three I don't have.
These two or three guys, I don't know.
Yeah, there's two of them, absolutely, it's the first time I've seen it, yeah.
We should put on a Christmas party for the girl, and meet them all.
Yeah, probably should. There's Marles, always looking for a free party.
No, it's the road party, not me.
I think she was off. Well, there's one coming up.
Marles, he's got a real cookie.
Yeah, I said, if you see the one that Sanders said.
I can't.
What's that, any wine down?
I gotta drive.
You need, bring Pooja for the happy.
Whatever, whatever.
Said your condition, all the, 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 and stuff.
For what?
That's what.
I'm not, I'm not even going to be able to go to it, so.
What?
You know, tell me.
Whatever's easiest for you.